It is six o'clock, so I would like to go ahead and open up the meeting. And I hope everybody is here who is supposed to be here. Can I ask, we have a couple of folks here who are coming for proclamations. Do you know if they're, if they've checked in, either Christine or Pam? I'm trying to tell. I don't see them on here yet.
They have not checked in yet.
Okay, it's just barely six, so. And we will go ahead and start the meeting and we'll get through some of the other stuff and maybe by the time we reach the mayor's announcements, they'll be there. And I will start with roll call. Let's go, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor Seaman.
Here.
Councilwoman Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Messner.
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Burghel.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, do we have our, our flag?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
There we go.
Getting faster, right on, okay. Oh, it went away.
Um, Kristen Raymond.
She stole your, did she steal your screen?
She did. Let's see, there she, there we go, hang on, all right.
She's very excited, I'm glad.
Hang on, just one second, let me get it back here, there we go.
All right, okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And next, we will have a report out of the closed session. And normally, we would ask City Attorney Black to do that. Do you want to do that, or do you want me to do that? How do we do that today?
I'll do it. On motion of Councilmember Messner, seconded by Councilmember Allison, and unanimously carried, the council authorized the city attorney to file a receivership action in regard to the property at sixteen thirty-nine Sixteenth Street in Eureka.
Excellent, so that was from today's meeting. We also have a report out from closed session that was held on a meeting from, that started on Friday, continued on Sunday, and that was selecting our interim city manager. So I am happy to announce that Miles Slattery was selected for that position. He will begin on July first, and it will be an eight-month interim period. And, and we are very happy to have him at the helm. He has lots of experience and he is going to carry us through the neck, the rest of the year, I am sure, with lots of style and substance and and solid, great knowledge of the city and definitely enthusiasm, definitely lots of that. So thank you very much, congratulations Director Slattery. Um, and now we are to move on to um mayor's, the mayor's announcements. Do we have anybody in the waiting room yet? Are we letting, nobody?
No, mayor, we do not. I do know that the, on the teacher's appreciation that they were going to have to find someone, the original person had to bow out. And they were looking for someone to take her place, and so I, I know that that one was iffy, but I was expecting Mo for the other, for the Juneteenth.
Well, why don't I start then by talking about our branding reveal, which is going to come Thursday. So on Thursday, this, as many of you know, the city of Eureka hired Eddie Alexander to do, to roll out a whole new brand. We've been working on it for a while. We were ready in March to reveal. And, but then got, got a little waylaid by pandemic. And, and so we are going to be doing that on Thursday. We want everybody to keep their eyes open for new freshened billboards at both the north and south side of town on Thursday. And there will be a grand reveal at City Hall that you will notice on that day as well. So keep your eyes open for any kind of notices and watch our Facebook page. And get excited because this has been a lot of work and we're all really behind it and it's going to be fun to see a new vibrant brand for Eureka, I think. And then I will go ahead and move on. We have two proclamations today. I will start with the teacher appreciation one. This was actually brought to me by a, a teacher in the community who just talked about how and how much work teachers have done this year, and I could not deny that that is fact. So we came up with this proclamation that is not to any organization specifically, but is to all of the teachers in Humboldt County and Eureka. Whereas teachers are responsible for shaping the minds and hearts of our local students in order to ensure that they have an equal chance at life through education. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, creating safe and living school cultures, building deep partnerships with families and communities, collaborating with colleagues and reflecting on their craft. And whereas the extenuating circumstances this year have pushed teachers to adapt teaching methods that are outside of their normal face-to-face practices. And whereas teachers engage students with exciting and rigorous teaching and learning despite the circumstances. And whereas the city of Eureka recognizes and supports our teachers at Eureka City Schools and throughout Humboldt County. Now therefore, I Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, claims our appreciation for teachers as this school year comes to an end. And be it further resolved, the city of Eureka encourages all members of our community to join with us. And personally expressing appreciation for our teachers for their dedication and commitment to the children of Eureka. Here's the proclamation. And I feel like, as we have many parents who have become teachers, have special appreciation that they never really knew until they had to try to juggle their lives and teaching and curriculum and technology. And teachers for learning how to juggle that technology as well as taking care of their own kids and their own kids' classrooms. So thank you to all of our teachers who put in so much this year, as well as everybody else in the school system who had a lot of extra work and learning, including our own Kim Burghel, who has been doing her work at Eureka City Schools. And the next proclamation is for Juneteenth. And this one says, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, declaring the slaves in the Confederate Territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and a half years to June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, in reaching authorities and African, and African Americans to the South and southwestern United States. And whereas, Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and the Southwest and in other parts of the nation. And whereas, June nineteenth has a special meaning to African Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and nineteenth, and has been celebrated by the African American community for over a hundred and fifty years. And whereas, Black Humboldt and the Eureka Chapter of the NAACP will be hosting a virtual celebration on June nineteenth, featuring Black artists' performances, vending from businesses owned by people of color and workshops led by Black professionals. Now therefore, I Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, hereby urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of the celebration in African American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. So this is for Black Humboldt and NAACP for their event, which is coming up. And they had their first one last year at Sequoia Park. And this year, they are learning how to do it differently, so I hope we can all tune in and learn some of the stuff that they're going to be presenting and buy some stuff from our businesses owned by people of color and enjoy the performances of our many artists. So on that note, I will go ahead and move into the, I was hoping that Mo Dezier was going to be here from Black Humboldt to make a presentation. She's been really active in this. And if you get a chance to hear her speak, she is always very thoughtful and very smart and I just really enjoy what she has to say. So I hope you all get a chance to hear from her sometime soon. But I am going to move on now to public comment. Do we have any public comment today? Good evening, mayor, we do, we have Max Brotman here on the phone. Max, can you hear me? All right, so you've got three minutes, Max, and go whenever you're ready.
Be sure and unmute the.
Very thoughtful and very.
Did you say go ahead when I'm ready?
I said, go ahead when you're ready.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm calling to request that the city address the, the rally, recent rallies and protests that have been going on, particularly in response to the defund the police request. I, I think this is a really important time to take action if there's so much national attention on this. And while I recognize that the police in Eureka are not responsible for the stuff, for all the you know, death and suffering that has been going on in the Black and people of color communities. We still have an obligation to question the basic assumptions of the police force. I strongly believe that the police, more often than not, exacerbate the situation and are enforcing laws that discriminate and exacerbate poverty. And potentially even create crime because of, because of exacerbating poverty. So I would like to ask the council to consider I can hear myself there. I would like to ask the council to consider addressing their budget and moving some of the police funds into more social services. And I'm particularly interested in the model of cahoots in Eugene, Oregon. Well, thank you, that'll be all.
Thank you, Max. Do we have any other public comment? Can you hear me? Oh, you can't, okay. No more public comment, we're good, okay. So now we are, we are going to take the public hearing fee schedule and move that to the next meeting. And move on then to the consent calendar. I do know we are going, we have some interesting pulling item B five, which is the extension of the disposition and development agreement with the Anco Communities for the development of Seventh and Myrtle Senior Affordable Housing Project. Do we have any other items that need to be pulled? All right, seeing then, can I have a motion? Councilmember Messner?
I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve the minutes of the, or well, sorry, to accept the to accept all of the minutes. Why, I'm reading the wrong thing, sorry. Except the consent calendar, except for B three, is that the one, or B five?
B five.
B five, except for B five, we'll pull that one.
All right, do I have a second?
Roll second.
Thank you, can we get a vote, please?
Um, Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember.
Hi.
Allison, and Councilmember Burghel.
Hi.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right, so now we will go to item B five, and I believe we have are we going to go straight to Chris Dart from Danco Builders, or does anybody from the city want to talk about this first? City, acting city manager? Do you want to sort of explain why it was pulled?
Uh, yes, we had received some questions regarding, this is the Fourth Amendment to the DDA between Danco Construction and the city of Eureka, and questions on the funding package that's been put together. Our project, our housing technician Kristen Raymond is available, has a brief report for you, and then we also have Chris Dart available from Danco to answer questions and provide additional information. I think Kristen may have some information to share, I'll kind of rely on her for that.
All right.
I don't have much information to share. Um, I guess I would let Chris give you guys the breaking of what exactly he's requesting and why. They are still in the process of securing all the funding to complete this project.
All right, I can jump in.
Thank you.
That's appropriate. My, good evening, everyone. Yes, so we're, we did, we do keep applying for the funds there. The funds are competitive. We're applying, we have secured on this project, project-based vouchers through the City of Eureka Housing Authority. We've also secured funds from HCD for the Infra- Infrastructure Grant. And then this piece with the city and the disposition development agreement. We do have a, a good portion of the funding secured for the site. However, we are competing for tax credits, and I think I said this in previous public hearings, is that the process is very competitive. Last, basically, we're competing against all rural communities in the state of California. And unfortunately, senior housing is at the bottom of the, of the pool. They're the last projects to be funded. Generally, it's program first funds, special needs projects, similar to the project we just completed in downtown Eureka. That project also competed for tax credits, but it was in the special needs category for those who were formerly homeless. And then they fund large family projects second, and then senior housing projects third. We did, basically, the way the program works is everyone scores full points. You basically have to score full points just to compete, which is a hundred and thirty points, and then it comes down to a tiebreaker. And the tiebreaker is a comp, is a, it's a formula of your total development costs divided as the denominator and the numerator would be other sources of funds other than the state tax credit fund. And we scored thirty-six. The winning score, senior housing project in rural set aside in the first round scored a forty, so we're, highest score wins. So we're four points away from being able to score, to get to a winning score. Oftentimes, these projects have multiple applications. We just were awarded a project in Fort Bragg, California, that we applied for eight times. And we just finally got the funding for that last round. I'm confident that this will get funded. But it does take time, it does take competition. People come into the competition, people exit the competition. And, you know, the only way really to make our score more competitive at this point is to bring in more local soft subsidies. And, you know, if we, I did the math before the meeting and it would take about a million dollars more to get to a forty-four score, which would surely win. Maybe a half a million would get to forty, but I, I would like to be able to continue to compete for this funding and put in another application. The next round is, is due on July first, coming up in a few weeks. We are ready to reapply and compete in that round. And if we're not successful, we'd like to compete again next year until the project's funded. So we just continue chipping away at it, working to get funded. I appreciate everybody's patience. I know that everybody wants the project and wants it to start, and we're doing everything in our power to get it funded and continue to compete and make put forth the most competitive application we can.
Does he may have any questions for Mr. Dart? I don't see any questions. All right, do we have any public comment on this, Pam, or Christine? No public comment? All right, so I will bring it back for any comments. Does he may have comments about this, or for Mr. Dart? Sure, Councilmember Messner first, and then Natalie.
I just appreciate your consistent, hard work on making this happen, and thank you for clearing up the just what it takes to get this grant and also what it would take to get a higher score, because those were some of my questions that I wondered about. So thank you for clarifying that, and I would make the motion, but I have a feeling Councilmember Arroyo wants to, okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion to grant the extension of disposition and development agreement with Anco Committees, or Community Communities for Development of Seventh and Myrtle Senior Affordable Housing Project.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Councilmember.
And I, I just wanted to comment briefly, the same, same thing. I appreciate it. I know how many applications these can take, or how many rounds of application may need to be submitted, and I really appreciate that Danco's a developer willing to take on the owner's process of going, going through these types of applications. And, I mean, I know you're a private company and that it's a mutual relationship, but I do appreciate that the city can be a partner in this because obviously we really need the housing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Especially since it's, you know, not the prioritized housing. It's nice to know that you're out there because we have a growing older population, including homeless in that area, so getting them nice affordable housing is important. All right, so we have our comments. Do we have a vote?
Councilmember Castellano?
Councilmember Burghel had a comment.
Did you have a comment? I'm sorry, I missed it, sorry. Councilmember Meun, do you have some comment?
There's some kind of horrible sound going on, like an alien abduction at the same time as our meeting. I don't know. Do we know where that's coming from?
Everybody's frozen, can you hear me?
I am going through and muting the sounds, our folks, so I think I've isolated it, but go ahead now, Councilmember Burghel.
Um, I just, actually, I did have a, when you brought up the idea of having to apply eight different times. So what would a timeline look like? And do you feel like, I mean, do you have any idea?
There's two cycles per year for the application. They have, well, there's another nuance to this, so there's generally, there's two different types of tax credits. There's nine percent tax credits, which is all it means, it's a higher value credit. And there's four percent credits, which is a lower value credit. The nine percent are twice the year. And we applied in March, and then we're going to apply if this passes in July. And so those are our shots for the nine percent credit. There is a possibility that there's a, there's a five hundred million in state credit that the governor passed this year, and they're potentially going to extend that to next year, which would allow this project to compete in two further rounds. So it would be able to complete four times next year if, if we were not successful this year, assuming that five hundred million dollar state credit is extended to twenty twenty-one as well. So the most, I think, the project, if you know, the one in Yaro Village in Fortuna, that's the longest one. I think it took six years to get the funding for that. The shortest timeframe, two years. It's the fastest I've ever seen it done, or we've ever done it.
Okay, I just appreciate that clarification because I've been wondering, it seems like, you know, we all want things to be done a little bit quicker, especially, you know, with the lack of housing that we have. So thanks for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we too want it done quicker.
All right, so I think we don't have any more discussion, right? Just double checking, looking around the room. Okay, now we can do our vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Councilmember Burghel.
Hi.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody, enjoy the evening.
All right, next up on our agenda is item C one, which is the annual rate review of service rate adjustment for solid waste collection. And we have Deputy Director Wood here today.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. This is the annual rate review for solid waste collection within the city per a franchise agreement that the city holds with Recology Humboldt County. Just a quick review of the difference between an annual rate review and a periodic rate review. Per the terms of our franchise agreement, certain costs are shored up annually, like disposal and insurance cost. This is referred to as an annual rate review. Periodic rate reviews happen every three years, so the next shore-up year will be fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. During a shore-up year, the actual costs associated with performing all of the existing programs, such as labor, fuel, leases, and administrative costs, are shored up against the costs that were projected in the previous two annual rate reviews. As you may recall, last year's annual rate review called for a point one eight percent decrease in rates. Instead of applying an actual rate decrease, council decided to carry over the credit to offset future rates. That credit is applied in this rate adjustment. In comparing our proposed rates, staff have concluded that we are in line with other local rates. For the same size thirty-gallon tote, Eureka's proposed weekly rate remains less than the county and McKinleville. Our CETA rates are slightly lower, however, the difference in rates can be attributed to the level of services, such as street sweeping. Per the city's franchise agreement with Recology Humboldt County, the annual rate application is to be provided to staff for review by April of each year. Recology submitted this year's rate review in early April. For the upcoming twenty twenty-one fiscal year, staff is recommending a one point zero nine percent increase from the rates that were approved by council in July twenty nineteen. The first factor that contributed to this rate increase are cost-of-living adjustments, which impact Recology's operational costs. The annual rate adjustment submitted by Recology calls for a cost-of-living increase of point eight percent. The largest contributing factors are in the form of pass-through adjustments. The first pass-through increase is Recology's recycling processing fee of seventy-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. The fee was approved at the June eleventh HWMA meeting. It was sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents before. The increase represents zero point two nine percent of the twenty twenty-one Recology annual curbside rate adjustment. One of the main drivers for the recycling processing increase is due to contamination levels exceeding what was estimated. This is true for all Recology franchise agreements, not just Eureka. In order to strengthen our recycling skills as a community, the city will be educating the public on the right ways to recycle and dispelling common misunderstandings about our recycling system. Recology truck drivers will be auditing recycling bins and leaving oops tags on bins if contamination is found. This tag is meant to positively alert residents so that they can learn how to take corrective action right at the bin by providing the necessary information to fix the problem. In addition, Community Services has been making efforts in doing recycling education outreach and a shut the lid campaign to keep water and contaminants out of the bins. There is also an increase in two green waste disposal costs at the HWMA transfer station, which have increased from forty-nine dollars a ton to ninety dollars a ton. The increased cost for curbside collection to Recology is fifty-nine thousand and twelve dollars and are spread over the green waste curbside collection customers only. The cost of the service with the other adjustments previously discussed is one dollar and sixty-four cents increase per customer per month. Recology and staff are currently looking into other green waste processing options other than HWMA. We've yet to solidify an agreement, we'll be back, but we'll be back with another rate adjustment if we can work something out. The associated costs related to this year's annual rate review have been analyzed by city staff and have been found to be justified. The results of the rate adjustment are as follows. For the typical commercial customer with a one yard bin, there's an increase of two dollars and eleven cents per month for a total rate of one ninety-five, seventy-four. For the typical residential customer with a thirty gallon tote, there's an increase of point three five, thirty-five cents per month for a total rate of thirty-two point two three. For a green waste customer with a ninety-six gallon tote, there's an increase of a dollar sixty-four per month for a total rate of six point one four, six dollars and fourteen cents. Staff would like to compliment Recology and the entire Recology team as they continue to do an excellent job. They're amazing to work with, not only of collection, but in resolving concerns of our customers in a fair and timely manner. And they quickly respond to a variety of emergencies as they arrive, as they arise. With that, staff recommends that council adopt the attached resolution and approve the one point zero nine percent rate increase for solid waste collection services and the one dollar and sixty-four cent monthly increase for green waste services for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Staff is available if there are any questions.
Do we have any questions for Deputy Director Wood? All right, seeing none, I will ask if we have any public comment on this topic. We do not, so do we have any comments or motion? Councilmember Castellano?
I will make the motion to adopt the resolution approving one point nine four percent increase in the rates for solid waste collection by Recology Humboldt County effective July one, twenty twenty. And thank you to Linda Wise and all of the team at Recology for keeping, just doing such great work and, you know, keeping things nice for our community. It was really fun to go out to Recology for the recycling sorting day. It's quite an impressive operation that you all have, have going on there. And I love all the art and around the building, too. It's, it's really great.
May I also chime in? I think Councilmember Castellano may have said one point nine four percent. And I want to make sure that it is actually one point zero nine.
Oh, sorry, that sounds great. That's just what's in our packet, but um.
There's an update packet, so.
Yeah, we got an amendment, so we get to make it cheaper. That's better.
One point zero nine, I'm happy to make that change.
All right, it sounded like Councilmember Arroyo was good, ready to second.
Yes, and I accept the amendment. And I just wanted to echo the thanks and appreciation for, especially for being very community minded and responsive when there are issues. I really do appreciate the great relationship that we're able to have with, especially with Linda. And I would say Recology as a whole, but Linda's really the face of Recology for us. So, so thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And do we have any other discussion? All right, I also want to say, I was there on the day that we sorted the trash or the recycling. And it was a really, it was really interesting what you can learn out there at your recycling center. And I also was enamored by the art. But I also happened to have a conversation with somebody today where Recology came up and they just talked about what a great employer you were. So that they knew people that had worked there and had had really good experiences. And that as an employer, you guys were really supportive of your employees. And that's always important to me, too. Because you gotta take care of our employees. So thank you for that. So we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Hi.
Councilmember Messner?
Did you hear me?
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Hi.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgel?
Hi.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to report inaction items. And we're going to invite Director Slattery to speak to us about the disposition and development agreement with Schneider and Bodie twenty nineteen Trust for Development of APNs zero zero two two four one zero zero seven and zero zero two two four one zero one three.
Thank you, Mayor, and good mayor, good, good evening, Council. As, as the mayor suggested, this is a disposition and development agreement for the Samoa Bridge properties. There, there's two parcels below the Samoa Bridge along Waterfront Drive, adjacent to the city's Samoa Boat Launch Facility. So I figured I'd provide some background related to this project. It's extensive background and dates all the way back to two thousand and seventeen. Previous city manager Sparks, Sparks had directed staff in early two thousand and seventeen to look into the harbor fund. It had been running at a deficit for many, many years. And there's an interest in providing an update and a report on the state of the harbor fund and to look into ways that they could possibly generate more revenue for the harbor fund. And so some of the things that came out of that report were that they were looking, staff was directed to kind of look at new rental spaces along the waterfront, renegotiate existing leases that weren't at fair market value to increase the mortgage at the marina, to transfer some of the salaries of our, of our harbor employees over into the general fund. Because a lot of those responsibilities that they have are outside of the harbor and more general fund related. So we've done a lot of those things so far. And another thing that was looked at was looking at leasing and selling some of the city's property. So in August of two thousand and seventeen, staff came to council with a request for qualifications to have these properties being out there and solicit proposals for development of those properties for a mixed use development and an RV park. So then in, so council approved the solicitation of the RFQ. Staff went out. It was brought back to council in December of two thousand and seventeen. And council awarded the lease option to purchase agreement for those properties to Travis Schneider and Stephanie Bodie at the time. And so then in two thousand and eighteen, June of two thousand and eighteen, staff came back once again to council with an exclusive right to negotiate for those properties. And that was approved by council in June of two thousand and eighteen. Since then, there's a lot of things that had to occur. This is an old redevelopment property, and so it's a part of our long range property management plan. And one of the components that needed to be completed before we could go forward with it just disposition and development agreement is we had to develop a compensation agreement and get it approved by all the taxing entities. And so that took a little bit of time and that was completed. And then after that, we had to complete the sequel for the project, and that was also recently completed. So once that was all done, staff and an attorney for redevelopment started working on the disposition and development agreement. That draft is, is a part of your agenda summary. The first thing I'd like to point out is that there, there are a couple of typos in that draft. One of the typos in sections three point two of that draft is that the verbiage says that the purchase price was determined by a certified appraiser that was commissioned by the developer. That is not what happened. That draft language that is put in that agreement was something that was from the redevelopment attorney, not knowing that the city actually hired the certified appraiser. And we hired the same appraiser that we've used for many of our other properties, the same appraiser that we use for all of the easements for the waterfront trail, for the Eureka City Schools courtyard and the Winsler properties, for all of the appraisals, for the parking lots, for the regional housing needs assessment, and also for the parking lot for the potential HSE development and as well as Tulawat. And so that's one of the typos around there. The, the overall DDA is in draft form, and this is to authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement. But for the most part, it's in place. And there's just that, that typo and another one that I'll bring up in, in a little bit. Also, in the disposition and development agreement, it mentions twelve acres of the parcels there. But if you read further into the agreement, from the beginning, we always knew that this property here, once it was sold, was not going to absolve the city's responsibility of maintaining the boat launch. And so in Exhibit C of the DDA, there are some exceptions. And one of those exceptions is that prior to the transfer of the property, that the city will get an easement to still operate and maintain that Samoa Boat Launch Facility. Also, in the exceptions is a requirement for the developer to get into a twenty-year lease with the Humboldt Bay Rowing Association at a dollar per year so that they can continue to operate in, in their facility that's currently on the parcels there. And so the actual appraisal encompassed ten point three acres, not a full, you know, a close, approximately a twelve acres. Another change, not change, but another thing that came up during the process was, you know, the original agreement was to do a lease with option to purchase. When we were looking back at this in two thousand and seventeen, obviously, the harbor fund was in a really bad state. Since then, we've, we've had to go through a much more expensive dredging process and, you know, made that situation that much worse. And so what city staff did is went to the developer to see whether or not they'd be willing to deal with it through purchasing the property from the city and having the city hold a promissory note against the property in order to get paid. This is financially a much better situation for the city. And we were hoping that the developer would be interested in that. The developer at the time was not really interested in it, but was willing to do that because they felt that potentially for construction funding, they would, they would want to do that. So anyway, we, we got the developer to agree to do that. And the difference between it is significant for the city. The way that the lease option would have worked is it would have been that the city would have paid, would have received fifteen hundred dollars a month after the DDA was signed for a twelve month period, month period, which would be considered the permitting period. Then we would have received two thousand dollars per month for the following six months, which would have been the construction period. And then four thousand dollars per month until the developer decided to purchase a property from the city. So that is a lot different than what we have in this current agreement. In this current agreement, we get a ninety thousand dollar down payment, which is five percent of the one point eight million dollar evaluation of the property. And then for the remaining monthly payments, they would be paying five percent, five point five percent of the remaining balance of that, of the, so which is one point seven million dollars. So approximately, we will be receiving eight thousand dollars a month for this. And so from the city financially, this is a much better option. And it was proposed by the city for, for this to happen. And we received agreement from the developers to do so. So that's how it is written up. As far as the timeline related to this, as soon as this agreement is negotiated and, and approved, the developer will have sixty days after the signing of it to submit the coastal development permit to the city. Once that's submitted, they have a hundred and eighty days after the coastal development is permitted, is submitted to have approval for that coastal development permit. And all necessary approvals must be attained by July thirty first of two thousand and twenty-one. And then as far as construction, all construction of the RV park must be finalized by December thirty first of two thousand and twenty-two. And that is the other typo that's currently in the DDA. In section four point three, it says construction will be completed by December thirty first of two thousand and twenty-one. And that's not correct, it'll be December thirty first of two thousand and twenty-two. So with that, council, I mean, staff recommends that councils authorizes the city manager to negotiate and executed DDA with Snyder and Bodie Trust, Trust two thousand and nineteen for the development of APN zero zero two, two four one, zero zero seven and zero zero two, two four one, zero one three. And if council has any questions, I'd be available, I'm available to answer them.
Any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Um, we've gotten a few different letters about this and in email form. It seems like at least a couple of people have wondered how this might affect use of the trails in that area. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, so right now, there's basically two current connections to the trail. One of them is coming from the Samoa Boat Launch Parking Lot, adjacent to the existing restroom facility there. And the other one comes along the property that, that would be sold here from the city, which is off of a paper street, Card Sun Street, and the property to the east of that, which is a privately owned parcel. Both of those accesses will, will, will continue. And furthermore, they'll be enhanced because when this is put in, that connection between T and Waterfront Drive, there will have to be a lot of sidewalk work put into there and crosswalks put into there in order to address the traffic. But you will have a sidewalk going from T Street across Waterfront Drive and to that connector that gets you to the trail. So from an access standpoint, it'll be ADA compliant from the street to the trail. And it'll have more access actually from that property.
All right, Councilmember Arroyo?
Um, a couple of questions and for clarification purposes primarily, but the first is, so we entered into an agreement in twenty eighteen that is, that lays out an exclusive right to negotiate. So I think my question is, trying to figure out how to frame this. My question is, I'm not saying that I intend to do this, but would we be in a position to change our minds now about going forward with this use of the property? So that's question one. And question two is, I, my computer's working so slowly that I apologize. I can't see if there's a schematic attached to this and one of the files. But what, what would the parking lot area around the boat launch consist of? And would there be trailhead access parking in that area?
So I'm not sure what you mean about the parking lot. Are you talking about the RV park? Or, or the city's parking lot where the boat launches?
City's parking lot where the boat launches.
So that is a part of a new project that's, that's being performed by the city of Eureka. So the Samoa Boat Launch, right now, we're in the design phase, well, permitting and design phase for retrofits to that entire boat launch. We're going to be relocating the restroom facility and putting it out more in the open on the west side of the parking lot, out from under the bridge. And so that will definitely provide more access. And we'll also be restriping and hopefully, when we get to the design phase, be able to create more parking in that parking. when we get to the design phase, be able to create more parking in that parking lot. But that will be performed by the city of Eureka. Um, as far as exclusive rights to negotiate through the processes that we've gone through, and I would defer to our city attorney. I believe that we are in this and we have an exclusive right to negotiate. And if they have not violated anything, I think they have the right to continue to move forward with this project. But I'll defer to the city attorney for that.
So I think the exclusive right to negotiate is just that. It's an exclusive right. And you would have to have cause to withdraw from the agreement. Uh, and you know, beyond that, I think that's a, that's a substantially separate discussion and one that we might not want to conduct entirely out of the open. Um, because it would be a valid closed session matter. But at this point, uh, I'm not aware of the kind of cause that we might uh, want to have at our back if we were gonna, if we were gonna try to open up the agreement to other participants. Uh, or cancel this one and enter into a new one with somebody else. But that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So.
And I'd also like to say that when, when we did put this out um, for the RFQ, we reached out to many developers in the area and received a lot of feedback from many developers in the area. Unfortunately, not all of them responded. Um, but you know, there, there was interest and those that, you know, were interested, applied, which was the one, but the other ones didn't find it um, worth putting us a middle in.
Thank you. And just to clarify, my, I, I wasn't suggesting that that was the route um, that I was interested in going down. We've just gotten some questions from the public uh, expressing concern about this particular use of the property. Um, and my point was really um, to ask whether, like, in some ways that ship has sailed and it sounds like contractually we're, we're on this path now that, that we're talking about, that.
And, and I don't mean to um, interject without receiving a question, but I, I've, I've received those emails as well. And I want um, to, to ease those, um, I can tell you that, you know, Schneider and Bodie own the um, shoreline RV park. And they are very, very um, receptive to public access in that area there. Um, we had offered when we built the waterfront trail to build an elaborate fence to separate the trail from their facility there. And they had no intention of that. They see this waterfront trail as a benefit to their facility and would have a similar, I, I believe, percept, perception of this development here that they would want to keep it open to the public so that people, you know, the only thing that separates their, their property there and the waterfront trail is a curb and that's meant for the RVs so they don't go onto the trail.
So I did find the schematic I was looking for and I just, i- it's related to my previous question, but um, I see that now I see the parcels. It really looks like the city's um, the area that we would retain for the boat launch and the access to that is just the area under the bridge. Is that correct?
No, we'd also maintain any portions of the trail that go over that parcel. So that one access on the east side of the parcels that we're giving up will still remain. And as a part of the sequo document that we put in, that that access would have access to waterfront drive. Um, through either on the edge of his, uh, of the parcel or through the parcel. But would they need to not only improve the sidewalk connectivity there, but also make sure that there's access from waterfront drive to the waterfront trail. And that, that easement is a part of that overall exceptions that are in exhibit C.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Castellano had a question again.
Um, just a quick question. Um, there's no way of knowing yet what it's going to look like exactly because we haven't kind of gotten to the de- design review phase or portion.
We don't know what it's going to look like. There was in the RFQ, staff had reached out to a local um, designer to put something together. That was not done by the winning um, solicitation. That was done by staff. You know, I would assume it would be somewhat similar to that. I know that there plans to be, you know, obviously a laundry facility and, and an office facility for, for the people that are there. Um, what that layout looks like, um, we don't have it now, but um, I know that um, Mr. Schneider and Mrs. Bodie are, are, are very open to speaking with the community group in that area and have discussions about, you know, what, what they would like to see. Um, they've had preliminary discussion when this was going on previously and would be more than willing to have those discussions with them again.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. I'll ask if we have any public comment on this.
We have no public comment, ma'am.
Thank you very much. So I'll bring it back for comments or motion. Councilmember Arroyo.
It's another question. Sometimes I think slowly about that question about whether I have questions. Um, so the, at one point, uh, several years ago, when the applicants were first um, so responding to the request for proposals, the proposal included um, some larger buildings. Could you speak to the um, where that stands?
So that is a part of the mixed use development that would go on the west side of the building. Um, right now they are not in position to go after the, you know, the permits or anything like that or have an idea of what that would look like. The way the proposal came in, it was going to be a small boutique motel with some mixed um, residential and commercial in there. But it's still in that same state. It's very conceptual and preliminary and there's not any idea of what that can be. There will be deed restrictions in there that ensure that that mixed use development complies with our long ta- long term, blah, 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 long range property management plan. Cause in order for us to do that, we have to put deed restrictions on it so that it complies with what was intended in redevelopment.
So you're saying on the um, the western side of that parcel, like uh, to the west of the bridge, there could eventually be, and part of this agreement could include the right to develop um, an additional building, not just an RV park.
Yes, that's how the RFQ was written and the exclusive right to negotiate and um, all the other preceding actions that council had taken.
Okay. And do, do you feel that the um, since you will be in the position to negotiate this, um, do you, do you um, believe that that will, that future phase of development will have other terms or other benefits to the city? Um, aside from, I guess, um, uh, tax generation?
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's why staff, when we developed this was to make sure that we didn't want to put out the Humboldt Bay Rowing Association. And Mr. Schneider, Mrs. Bodie feel that that's a good fit with what they would potentially put in there. Um, I think there would also be a lot of benefits as we discussed this from the beginning is that, you know, these properties here are are properties that I wouldn't call blighted, but are definitely a maintenance responsibility for the city that'll no longer um, uh, be required of us. And they will also make now that um, the waterfront drive connection is there. It'll really provide some connectivity into Old Town. And I think from an economic driver standpoint, will really make a kind of extending Old Town to that area there. I think will, will really benefit the city.
Councilmember Messner.
I'll make the motion if you weren't going to, um, councilmember Arroyo, to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a disposition and development agreement with Schneider and Bodie Trust 2019 for the development of APNs 002 dash 241 dash 007 and 002 dash 241 dash 013.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Castellano?
I'll second. I also want to, uh, I, I just remembered while we were talking about this that, you know, the, the city of Eureka has an arts and culture district now that actually extends along the waterfront there um, all the way to the Blue Ox. So this could be a, a cool kind of opportunity of like tying in that arts and culture district between Old Town and the Blue Ox, just to see that idea.
Yeah, and I, I just, one with the, the, one of the things that's, you know, there's not much negotiations involved. This DDA is pretty much going to be the same, but one of the things that we're going to look into with the developers is to try and realign uh, First Street and Waterfront Drive there where they connect at T. So it's not that awkward kind of turn that goes on there. And so I think that would really be really beneficial if, you know, we could make that happen because that's something that the city's been looking to do for a long time.
All right. We have a motion. A second. Do we have any other discussion? All right. Can we get a vote, please? Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Right.
And councilmember Burgal.
Hi. Nice to see this moving forward.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we are going to invite uh, Director Malar to talk to us about item D2, which is the 2021 budget.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is really just to introduce the 2021 budget. Uh, I have a quick PowerPoint presentation that I'll put up right now. So tonight I will be providing two documents. Uh, the first one is the, you know, the official uh, 2021 proposed budget, but also the 2021 proposed line item budget. Um, what's the difference? Well, the line item budget is really the basis of the first document. Uh, this displays all the individual accounts that departments use during the, during the year to monitor their budget or to do purchasing. Uh, the main document uh, really aggregates this information and create, you create schedules and graphs. Uh, it also includes descriptions of departments and divisions. Uh, you know, very simply, this is the user friendly version and this one is not user friendly. Uh, so how do you access the 2021 proposed budget? Um, we're going to take a little detour. So you go to the city's website. And because I can't see on your side, do, are you guys seeing the website or the PowerPoint?
Not yet. Still PowerPoint.
Okay. So to find the budget, um, you go to departments and then down to finance and then, if I can do this right, and then financial reports. And we placed it at the very top. So you, the first document is the main budget document. Um, and then the other one is the line item. So you see here, uh, this is very visually oriented and it includes information that the line item budget doesn't. Uh, depending on your web browser, right now we're using Chrome. Uh, it does have a feature to allow you to look at the bookmarks. So we've included a bookmark for each section. Uh, this will help you get through the document, uh, or navigate the document better. Uh, and then here we have the line item budget. Uh, it is, you know, pretty plain and it's just page after page of our chart of the counts. So again, you go to the city's website, you go under departments, then to finance, and then the financial reports to access that 2021 proposed budget. Uh, there is more to come. Uh, I will be adding some org charts. Uh, there's a section on fund summaries that I'm updating. And then we include a demographics and statistics section. And really that is so we can win the GFOA budget award. Uh, what are the next steps in the budget process? Well, we're going to have a, a budget study session next week hopefully and possibly two. And then we're looking at a budget adoption at that first meeting in July. Um, what should you expect at the buddies, budget study sessions? Uh, I will be going into detail. I will start with the overall budget trends. Uh, I will do an analysis on fund balance. Uh, I will dive into CalPERS and what's going on with pension costs. Uh, I will talk about the budget cuts where and how much. Uh, and then we will go into department specific information. This will either be me or a representative from the department. And then if we have the public show up, uh, it would be a good time to do the Q and A. Um, so all I need tonight are, is some direction about what you would like to see. And then some ideas about when these study sessions would happen.
All right. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions first for councilmember? Uh, for not, for councilmember, for uh, Director Malar? Councilmember Arroyo.
So I've been seeing information in the public, um, specifically in the media, uh, Time Standard specifically, showing our, a photo of our, I believe our general fund, um, expenditures and that isn't um, representative of our entire budget. Um, could you speak to how the general fund fits into the picture just for the, um, although there's um, a lot of interest right now in our city budget. Could you speak to that?
Sure. Uh, so, you know, most cities or I guess all cities would, will have a general fund. Uh, this is where you, um, or this is the fund that typically collects tax revenues. Uh, it's for general purpose, um, you know, activities. You know, typically it's public safety and planning and parks and rec. And then we also have what are called enterprise funds. Another term for an enterprise fund is a business-like fund. Meaning that it, it operates kind of like a business you would see in the private industry. Um, those include the water and wastewater funds. So if you're looking at the city of Eureka, you know, we are a municipal corporation and that's a good word because we really have these, you know, sister companies. Uh, I would look at, you know, the city of Eureka having three main operations. That is the general fund, then the water fund and the wastewater funds. Uh, we do have some, you know, we have a lot of different operations, but when you look at the numbers, uh, the general fund, water and wastewater make up the lion's share of the budget. Uh, you know, for 2021, we're looking at a general fund budget of roughly 26, 27 million dollars. And then our uh, water and wastewater are about seven to 10 million each. Um, and then we have about $10 million worth of other funds, um, such as, you know, the harbor operations or the building funds, um, as well as what is called internal service funds. This is where we put operations like finance and city manager, uh, as well as personnel and city attorney. Uh, what these funds are used for are, you know, what is it's similar to your overhead expenses. Uh, we use these funds and we charge them out to the, all the other funds. So the general fund, the water fund and the wastewater fund, they essentially fund the internal service funds. Um, I will be sure to go over our fund structures and our major funds during the budget study session.
Thank you. I think it was very confusing for people to see a budget of approximately 30 million or a little under 30 million represented as the entirety of our city budget. Um, and I just don't think there were, there weren't amplifying, there wasn't any more amplifying information presented along with that. So um, I know I've been fielding calls all week, um, with, under that assumption. So thank you.
You know, that makes sense because a lot of my presentations have been focused on the general fund. And given the current conditions, that's where we're really having trouble because that's where all the tax revenue goes.
Councilmember Allison.
Um, I was also wondering maybe during the study sessions, we can sort of explain our roles as a city and um, sort of like how the layers of government work from the state, county and local government perspective. So you're talking about, people are asking to defund the police. people asking to defund the police and how city budgets go towards, you know, let's say like more public health, yet, you know, the county manages public health. I just think helping to explain how our local government works and how that works for our budget would be helpful.
I will make sure to include information about that. Especially in these times where we have operations like Cape and Uplift, where we're starting to creep into some services we haven't done in the past. So.
What other kind of direction are you looking for? In terms of how it's presented, is it going to be live or on Zoom, that kind of direction or?
Just of the budget that might not be obvious in the document. I have received some emails about specific programs within departments, such as Cape or Uplift, as well as Mist and Sea Set. And really that requires engaging with the department. You know, the budget only goes so deep. I can see down to the division. But sometimes we have functions that, you know, are not hidden, but just kind of hard to to point out if you're not part of that operation. So.
My questions for that were very similar to Councilman Allison's. It's the, and we can't take money from a city department and give it to a county department. So yeah, just how does that work with public service or public health and social services and what we provide?
And actually, to go back to Natalie's question, that's a good point to bring up in terms of when you look at the general fund and the water fund. Because you cannot use water revenues to support activities in the general fund. But you can use tax revenues to support activities in the water fund. And those are important to remember because we can get in trouble if we don't administer that properly.
Councilmember Mayor. Council, we were looking at next Tuesday and Wednesday to conduct the budget study sessions and we're checking with you on your calendar. 5:00 PM on both those evenings. And Wednesday's only if we need it from Tuesday's meeting. If we need to go further in the week, we certainly can, but we thought we could dedicate those two days to the budget. Does that work for?
Would we be doing this on Zoom? Is that what you're talking about?
So we would be doing a Zoom meeting. We're actually going to be opening up City Hall next week. And so I could entertain the public in the council chambers. We would have to do social distancing. And we may have to put some people in room 207 if we did have a, you know, a large presence from the public. But council members can be both here and/or at their home. And we can do a combination and we really are trying to engage the public in this conversation and give them every opportunity to participate in the study session.
And Councilmember.
Oh, those, those dates and times work for me. I think I would probably choose to attend via Zoom though, if it were, even if it were held in person, just being sensitive to my role and working with a lot of first responders. So I'm trying to expose myself as minimally as possible to, I guess, the general public, not to say that there's anything wrong with the general public, but just trying to learn my exposure.
Sure.
I am, I could do them. I actually was scheduled for vacation during that time. So I would also be doing Zoom. I would just have to make sure that I'm somewhere that I could do a Zoom meeting, but.
Very good. So five o'clock on the 23rd and 24th? Okay.
All right. Did anybody have any other suggestions or directions about things that they want Director Millar to consider as he's preparing his presentation? Councilmember Castellano?
I suppose it's more of a question of, like, I remember last year, you know, there's some monies that the city, you know, kind of spends on other organizations and then some monies that we've, we had kind of extra last year. You know, and I know this year the budget is much different. What I'm getting at is folks have asked me, you know, about opportunities for participatory budgeting, you know, for like community funds or community projects or, you know, things like, I guess I'm just curious, like with our, you know, budget considerations, how much flexibility is there in the budget to kind of think of new ideas? Are we really like bare bones here?
We are bare bones at this point. But now is also a good time to plan for the future and, you know, get these ideas out there so that when we're developing, you know, the mid-year budget or 21, 22, that maybe we will start to have the opportunity to bring some, or present some new line items. Unfortunately, you know, times are tight and I think we should be fairly prudent because we don't know what the future holds at this point. But yeah, I mean, we can analyze the budget and maybe there's a little bit of space. I'm not, I'm not sure about how much you were thinking because that can really change the conversation as well. So.
I didn't have a per amount in.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I have a process question and then a number of thoughts I'd like to share, but process-wise, are we taking public comment on this item?
We did not have anyone who asked to speak on this item at this time.
Wow, okay. And well then, just a couple of notes. I'd just like to echo that strong interest in seeing our programs that are really collaborative and community-oriented that are often like a collaboration between departments. So it might not show up as, like, we don't have a program or project-based budget. We have a departmental budget, but then all of these wonderful programs and partnerships fit in there. So if that can be highlighted particularly when it comes to really serving our community and vulnerable members of our community, I would find that really helpful. I'm really appreciative that so many people are suddenly taking an interest in civic affairs and I think it's wonderful that folks are interested in the city budget. Often this process is very lonely and hard to get folks engaged in. So I certainly want to encourage that to the extent possible and just recognizing that this is a difficult time to do that. I just wanted to voice that. And then, you know, I want to speak somewhat directly to the hundreds and hundreds of emails that we've gotten asking us, it's a, it's a copy and pasted email asking us to defund the police and I, I think it has, much like petitions have merit, it certainly has merit that people are all concerned and feeling something that they want to share with us. A lot of people all over the nation and even from other countries have sent those, as well as some of our own Eureka residents and local residents who spend time in Eureka. And we've gotten certainly some emails that were written to us by the sender that weren't the form, form letter. And I, I just want to acknowledge that we are, I take it very seriously that we are, are city staffs, employers, and we have a duty to our employees to support them and not suddenly make changes that impact their employment. And I want to note that, you know, this is something that as we talk about how to reflect the work that we really do in our city, we need to do that in a way that is comprehensible to the the, the, the public, people who don't sit in meetings like this all the time. And, and, you know, I think there is, there has been voiced even from our police department, a desire to not task the police with everything that is difficult and challenging in the city. So I certainly hear that too. And as there are opportunities that we can all agree on about ways to do that better, I certainly want to hear those and be receptive and responsive to those. I just want to also note that, you know, we do have some pretty incredible programs that we have in the, in the great scheme, you know, the grand scheme of things done on a shoestring to enact some of the social services programs and really help people in a direct way. Our budget is in the $60 million range and the county is, is in just for Department of Health and Human Services is around 260 million just for scale. So if people are thinking about like, why doesn't the city of Eureka have more of these social programs? We really aren't the entity that is in our current structure funded for that. Certainly we have been successful and I want to just like lift up our staff for being successful and getting funding that supports programs that are a little outside of our wheelhouse. But we are not mandated by law to have social service programs the way that the county is. And so it's really something that we are going to have to continue to partner with the county to do. So if anyone is watching this and did not know that, I know I certainly found it illuminating when I got into council. And I may have the numbers a little bit wrong, but that's the kind of scale that we're talking about. And then I certainly hear that there are, there are frequently more and more requests at the police department and my ward, the number one thing that I hear that people want is actually an increase in traffic enforcement. And, you know, should we find ourselves in a position to focus more on that within the police department and find, you know, other support for other services, then I would love to see a shift that recognizes that request and needs it. Which isn't to say that EPD is, is not doing that, but, you know, it's certainly something I hear that people want more of that's sort of in the traditional policing wheelhouse, I think. And then lastly, I, I just wanted to note two more things, but one is that I, you know, I watched this a mini documentary about the death of Josiah Lawson and how that was handled. And it was made in LA or in Southern California. And there was so much criticism of the small town police department having just two or three officers on duty. And I thought to myself that that's incredibly common for small municipalities. And folks in a bigger city might not realize that, that, you know, to just be able to have and a, a number of people who are trained and ready to respond in a terrible situation like that requires staffing and funding. And so I just, you know, I want to be sure that we're including that as a consideration when we talk about funding for our police department. And then finally, I swear this is the last thing. You know, I just really want to be sure that the, that public safety is something that is in the public sphere, that is not privatized and that is not the realm of vigilantes. In my view, right now, the system we have in this country, though there may be significant challenges with it, requires that police be accountable to to the public. And I don't take that lightly. I hope nobody out there takes it lightly. So I, I agree that as a nation, we need to do better. And I also want to recognize that there is benefit to having public oversight of public safety.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Do we have any other comments? Well, I do want to say I really appreciate you saying all of that because we've all been thinking a lot about the calls that have been coming in and how to balance that with some of the more complicated issues, not at all. You know, setting aside the, the desire of the folks that's in it and the very real issues that they see with, with policing, but also things like making sure we have enough police on duty when we need them. And yes, traffic enforcement comes up. It is my number one call as well. So and just to remember that, that there is a lot, there is a lot of complicated stuff that goes into running a city within a county, within a state. And all of the things that go with that. So how do you feel, Director Millar? Do you have your, do you have direction?
Yes, thank you very much.
Excellent. Well, I am looking forward to, to meetings on the budget. It'll be fun. And with that, I think we'll let you, we'll let you relax now. And we will move on to our city manager reports where we have a small COVID-19 update, I believe. Acting City Manager Powell?
Yes. I just wanted to remind everyone that the county health officer has lifted the travel restriction for non-essential versus essential travel. And all of our hotels and motels will be opening up this Friday. And that works well for our new brand launch and all of our marketing efforts that are going to be put into the surrounding area to welcome visitors to the city of Eureka. Additionally, the city of Eureka City Hall will be opening next week. Currently, we have been operating through appointment only. And next week, the front doors will be open. We will be conducting business in the lobby, in the front lobby and in a kind of a safe area, wearing masks, just to keep folks from, you know, coming throughout the building and having to wear masks and, and being in the hallways. So we will, we encourage the public to make appointments if, or do their business online or over the telephone. But for those who cannot, please come down. We will be open and we'll be responsive to what you need. This also helps us do kind of a hybrid meeting in the future utilizing the city council chambers. But we do want to ensure that we, a public are social distance and we'll be working out the details on that. I also wanted to let you know that we are working on a strategic visioning that was brought up at the last meeting. And we will be setting something up for late July and August and we'll keep you posted on that. And that will also be a public workshop and, and the public would be invited to attend. Additionally, I just want to say, this will be my last meeting as Acting City Manager. And thank you so much for allowing me to do this for the last few weeks. And I look forward to being back in that city clerk's chair, but I also want to thank Christine Lopez and Jessica Payne for holding down the computers for me over there and doing a great job and really taking a load off of me. So thank you very much. And Director Slattery, I just can't wait for the next eight months. It's going to be an exciting time for the city of Eureka. So thank you, Council.
Thank you. And now we will move on to our council member reports. And I will start with Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you. Firstly, just thank you, Acting City Manager Powell, for so graciously stepping into this role. And yeah, I have a lot of respect and appreciation for you. Just your sense of wisdom and experience with the city and your, your care for public process. So thank you so much. And it's, it's been great. And I look forward to working with Director Slattery in the coming months. Let's see, I've been participating in the Economic Resilience Consortium meetings and last Friday I presented kind of a Resilience Consortium meetings and, um, last Friday, I presented kind of a series of policy recommendations, uh, based on the perspectives and needs of artists. Um, and really not just artists, but artists as community members who are thinking about with care about their community. Um, so that was exciting to be able to present that. Um, and I've also spent in numerous conversations and, and doing hours of research about, um, you know, just the current political climate and, you know, the really appreciating the kind of wealth of desire for addressing systemic racism, um, in our community and beyond. And, um, you know, and it's, gosh, it, you know, it's going to take all of us working together and, you know, and I, you know, unfortunately, a, a tragedy is what kind of brought us here in this current moment. Um, and I'm deeply hopeful that we can continue working together far beyond the tragic moment and into a real sense of like the power and beauty of, of kind of honoring diversity and recognizing the possibility for change together. Um, and that being said, you know, I, I deeply appreciate so many comments and things and letters and phone calls. And I do think, and I, I definitely invite people to keep participating and, um, you know, really like, I'm, I'm really excited to work with you and help you like step forward into roles of leadership in the community. Um, you know, something I've been really thinking a lot about is how can we strengthen our neighborhoods and create more opportunities for resilience, um, you know, for everyone in our neighborhoods. So that's just something, you know, whether it's a budget priority and, you know, it, an entire systemic overhaul priority or, you know, it, it's, that's a huge commitment of mine and I really, um, I'm excited to work with the public as, you know, as a member of the public in, in, uh, working towards that, you know, and, um, yeah, just please continue to reach out and let's try new things together and, um, grow and change as a community. Um, yes, I probably could say more, but maybe I should stop. Um, gosh, uh, I, I guess that's all for now. Um, I have a lot of feelings about this and, and, um, it's, you know, it's, I g- I guess I just want to say it's, um, the tragedy of George Floyd's murder is not what brought us into a system where we're recognized. I mean, it's, it may be a, a moment of where we're brought towards looking at systemic racism, but it's been a long time coming. And, um, you know, we have a history and a legacy within our own community, uh, of people who have had experienced long and significant loss. And that's not something that is going to change overnight. And so it's, um, yeah, I, I, I think let's, let's be courageous and radical and also steady in our path towards community transformation.
Thank you. Councilmember Bregel.
I don't know if you can hear me. I've been in and out of the meeting, the whole meeting. My, my, um, internet's been down. So I'm going to enjoy watching the meeting tomorrow and listening to all the things that I have missed. Um, and looking at all the things that I probably would have commented on. Um, but I really, I want to say, I really appreciate, um, a lot of the things that I did here in and out. And, um, I really appreciate, kind of going along with what, um, Councilmember Castellano said, I really appreciate that there's a passion in our community to change and to do something different. And that people are actually getting involved. And I think Councilmember Arroyo also spoke to that at one point about how, you know, it's great to see people that are now interested in our budget and what's happening. And just know that we all live here, we'll all have a voice and we all are in, our voices are all important. And so I hope that you do, as a public, continue to reach out to us and continue to work together to make these really positive changes that need to happen for our city. So before I, um, lose my internet again, I think I'll be done for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Messner.
Thank you. And, um, yes, I, I just, uh, over the course of recent weeks, I found myself at a crossroads. Um, it's just, I navigate the amount, the mountain of grief I feel over the losses that have taken place, um, not just with George Floyd, but others that have been targeted and victimized in senseless and blatant acts of violence, um, fueled by racism and hatred. And, um, I just think that it's, you know, we have a moral imperative at this time to stand up for what's right. Um, the infringement of rights, um, of any person, no matter what color, no matter what race, um, and any kind of, um, prejudicial policing has, that has devastated minority communities across this country. Um, it's just long overdue for us to stand together in solidarity and that solidarity against violence and against racism is critical. And what our nation experienced collectively as we watched what happened to George Floyd during that eight minutes and forty-six seconds, uh, seconds should never, ever happen again. We should, we really need to stand and say never on our watch. Um, and, and we really need to just work together to bring about justice and reconciliation, not division and our anarchy. And I think that's part of what has been, um, expressed from other council members and from even our, um, city city leaders, that this is a time for us to stand together and to do what we can. Um, just a few weeks ago, our community was spending a good portion of time, um, during not only one of our meetings, but, um, but on some other meetings and community members around, around our community commending our police, um, department and what they have been doing in the ways they brought hope and peace and assistance to our community, and especially right now in the middle of this pandemic. And that this is, um, this horrific thing that happened and occurred, um, that we cannot let that, um, mar our view of, of what we've accomplished so well together already as a community. Um, and not, not saying we don't have more to do. And so we just keep pushing forward. But let's push forward and not go backward. So I just really want to encourage, um, people to, to stand together. We can overcome, um, racism. We can overcome violence and these kinds of, um, divisions and acts against any human being, no matter what human being that is. Um, and we can only do that as we stand together. And when we look at our at history and we learn from history, from sometimes horrible things and sometimes amazing things. We do learn that one of the best ways to do that is something that, um, was stated at our Stand Against Violence and Racism when we stood in front of EPD a few weeks back. And that is that the one way to truly overcome is we have to join together and combat hatred with love. Um, and so I am, I am, it's, I'm really looking forward to just seeing how we do that together and what we do to foster environments of reconciliation, equity, inclusion, um, in better ways and how better we learn to, how better we listen, how better we learn and provide opportunity for. So, um, that being said, um, there are a couple of things that I, that there's been a lot of things I've been involved in in the last couple of weeks, but, um, the League of California Cities, there were two, there were our committee meetings that we were supposed to travel for, where we did have those. And the Community Services Committee, which I have chaired, um, for the last two meetings, um, due to our chair being, not being voted back in. Um, we, the Community Services Committee, we had a robust and really um, good conversation around how we are going to get through some of these issues regarding, um, regarding what, what effects COVID has had on communities. And I would encourage the public to continue to reach out to our, to our senators and our, um, assemblymen, because they are making big decisions. And, um, in mid-August, they will be making, um, some serious decisions about our budget. Um, just one being that, um, that schools and, um, help, and after-school care, all of that is going to be really important to get those up and running again. And so, um, it's even critical for our workforce. So make sure to be engaged at that level. Um, and then the Public Safety Committee, um, as a part of that committee for this, at this, um, League of California Cities, um, we did actually put together, um, statements specifically regarding the issues that, um, we are facing and have faced over these past couple of weeks. And, um, it's a pretty, some really strong statements, but also some strong, um, movements forward, including really working toward adopting the pillars of twenty-first century policing. Um, that has been, that, that actually our previous President Obama put in and instated in two thousand and fourteen, asked governors across the country and cities to, um, adopt. And we've adopted, uh, most of those in Eureka. Um, but that's something at the city and state levels that we can continue to just push for, um, particularly in our area, so that we can have, um, policies and practices that ensure equitable protections, um, of the freedoms and rights of all citizens. So, um, those are my, my main reports. There are plenty of others, but I think that's enough for tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison?
Hey, um, I just wanted to share a quote from one of my childhood heroes, Carl Sagan. I think, um, this quote really greatly, uh, sort of, it, it really, really changed the way I think about the world and hopefully it might for you. So, um, he, he was talking about the Voyager, um, that took a shot of earth as it was leaving, uh, the solar system, looking back, the pale blue dot. And it goes as, "The earth is a very small stage in a vast cosmic arena. Think of the rivers of blood spilled by all those generals and emperors so that in glory and in triumph, they could become the momentary masters of a fraction of a dot. Think of the endless cruelties visited by the inhabitants of one corner of the dot on scarcely distinguishable inhabited of the other corner of the dot. How frequent their misunderstandings, how eager they are to kill one another, how fervent their hatreds, our posturings, our imagined self-importance, the delusion that we have some privileged position in the universe are challenged by this point of pale light. Our planet is a lonely speck in the great enveloping cosmic dark. In our, in our obscurity, in all this vastness, there is no hint that help will come from elsewhere to save us from ourselves. It is up to us. It has been said that astronomy is a humbling, and I might add, a character-building experience. To my mind, there is perhaps no better demonstration of the folly of human conceits than this distant image of our tiny world. To me, it underscores our responsibility to deal more kindly and compassionately with one another and to preserve and cherish that pale blue dot, the only home we've ever known." And to me, that's one of the most powerful quotes I've, I've ever read. And, um, I just hope you think about that too and realize really how insignificant we are to the universe. And if anything, that should spur us to be good to one another. And it's time we be better to each other.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you for all your, your reflections tonight. Um, I, I have little city business to report outside of, um, outside of the emails and phone calls and day-in, day-out communications. And then this meeting, um, do serve on the, um, Clement River Renewal Corporation Board, um, which is not a city appointment, but, um, is important to our region and that process is continuing, um, nothing big or, um, overtly, um, no big announcements, but it's, uh, certainly a pivotal time right now in the project and it's continuing to move forward. Um, and it's an honor to be a part of that. Um, I, I've been thinking a lot, um, as you could tell from my earlier, um, speech, I've been thinking a lot about, um, our role and leadership and, um, what safety means. And, um, and I don't know that many people know what I do when I'm not a council member. Um, I know my colleagues do, but, uh, you know, in addition to serving in the Coast Guard and currently being on active duty orders, I, um, I work for a nonprofit, Redwood Community Action Agency, where my work really centers around public health and, um, I work with two community groups in different parts of the county who have chosen to focus on improving the perception of safety in their community. So for three plus years, I've been working with these two groups, um, on the Samoa Peninsula and in Bridgeville respectively, to think about what makes people feel unsafe. Um, and in particularly in really rural areas disconnected from their neighbors, um, and um, day in, day out affects their sense of safety. Um, and it's very interesting to talk about people's feeling of safety in their community um, and try to turn that into a metric to improve. Um, so I've learned a lot about how people define it. Um, and a lot of people choose traffic safety or a sense of safety with walking and biking to focus on, um, more than I would have anticipated, because I think when we use the term safety, people often think about how safe they are, um, from crime or, um, or from, you know, how safe, safe their homes are from fire. And in Bridgeville, actually, that's a certainly a consideration is disaster preparedness. But really the focus has been community building, getting to know one another, um, getting to know your neighbors, um, making sure people are safe to walk and bike around and to get outside and be outside, um, with their families and then, um, preparedness for disasters. And, um, interestingly, very little has come up around, um, response to, to crime, which isn't to say that it's not a concern, because it certainly it is. But, um, I think when we, when we think about how communities can respond on a community scale to improve the perception of safety, I guess what I'm getting at is I've really learned a lot of lessons there, but I think, um, I'm looking forward to seeing those move forward. And I want to note that it takes a lot of work, because these communities have been working together for like three years and cultivating leadership and, um, learning about the systems and policies that are in place that they could make a change in. Um, and that required dedication and work and a commitment to volunteerism and, um, and it's not nothing. So it doesn't just happen overnight, um, and it does take time and energy. So, um, I'm really looking forward to applying some of my lessons learned, um, in, in the city and together with all of you. Um, and I also just want to note that, um, you know, I, I really hope, and I, I issue as an invitation to you all, um, to, to really try to have conversations with people who are your colleagues, um, who you think can give you constructive feedback and, um, around race, because I noticed that a lot of people who are in leadership roles in our community are really uncomfortable. around race, because I noticed that a lot of people who are in leadership roles in our community are really uncomfortable talking about it. And I, I think that makes sense. It's, it's not easy, but I think all of us can do that and improve our sense of awareness and understanding. And I think it'll make us better leaders. So, I invite all of you to join me in doing that because I'm certainly doing that too. And please reach out to me, of course, in a Brown Act considerate way. But I'd welcome staff or, or any of my colleagues to, to have those conversations and just get comfortable with it. There's a, there's a learning curve and a discomfort you have to go through. But I, I hope that we can all really continue to be outspoken about how we condemn racism and in our community. And I think the community is looking to us to do that.
All right. Thank you. Well, I think that our closing statements really sort of set the tone for what is going to be an ongoing communication, not just about the police department, but the city as a whole. I know that we're, and we will be coming back to you with all kinds of meaty discussions about what we can do as a community. Not just kind of thoughts at the end of the night, but really thinking about what policies and things we can do and here at the city. So, stay tuned. But tonight, you get to go and enjoy while there's still daylight. So, we'll see you all in two weeks.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care, everybody. Good to see you.
Yeah, you too.
Good night.
Good night.